All right, good evening. It is 6:36 by my watch, June 25th, 2024. And I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, please call the roll. Lisa, if you wouldn't mind, that'd be great, too.
Yeah, I'll call the roll. Starting with Councilman Pitts.
Yeah.
Councilman Wu.
Here.
Councilwoman Miles.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Rosini.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Uh, next up is a pledge of legions. Uh, Councilman Pitts, would you please lead us, sir?
Please.
Thank you.
Please rise, place the flag, hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. Thank you, the Villa Park City Council and staff, welcoming to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete, as I mentioned previously, and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time, which has now passed, but you can still submit speaker cards. Speaker cards can be found outside the, excuse me, at the entrance to the city council chambers. Speakers will be called in individually during the public comment, will be called up, I should say, individually during the public comment section of the item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers were also able to submit comments in writing by 3:00 PM today. Those comments will be read aloud during the public comment section of the item. And again, just to reiterate, it's important, if you have something on your mind, if there's something in this community, if there's something that is affecting this community or the state of California or anything, you have a right to speak, and we want to hear your voice. Every member on this dais wants to hear from you. So, thank you. Presentations, sober living facility.
Thank you, Mayor. There's been a lot of conversation, a lot of inquiries to City Hall, and I thought it would be appropriate to start the meeting with a brief discussion about the ability to, or the lack of the ability of the city to either permit, monitor, or approve locations for a sober living facility. So I've asked Todd Litfin, our city attorney, and Captain Patel to give us a brief presentation, because I know many of the people in the audience are probably interested, and so we'll go ahead and, if that's okay with you, we'll have a brief presentation.
Please.
Start with Todd.
I would appreciate that. Todd, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, and you're at an appropriate volume. Thank you, sir.
For once in my life, well.
Didn't want to say anything.
So, sober, yeah, sober living facilities are a group of a number of different types of residential care facilities that are, some are licensed, some are unlicensed in the state of California. For a number of licensed facilities, there are specific references in the California Health and Safety Code that limit what a city can do as far as the allowance or the prohibition of these types of facilities. In general, if the facility only houses six or less individuals who are receiving treatment, the city legally has to treat them exactly how it treats every other single-family residential home, as if a family lived there. That is a matter of state law. If there are between seven and 12 individuals residing on the property, the city generally has the ability to review the situation and issue or not issue a permit, usually via a conditional use permit. Sober living facilities is a name that has generally been given to a number of treatment centers that have taken place in residential homes that do not fit within one of the state licensure categories. So they're generally not licensed by the state. And when these started popping up, a number of cities tried to regulate them by saying, "These same rules which I just recited do not apply to sober living facilities, and they can be barred in residential communities." Namely, Costa Mesa, Newport Beach fought these issues for a number of years. As the issue went through both the California State and the federal judicial system, the rules that were put in place by the courts were that addiction itself is deemed a disability under the American With Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act. So it is unconstitutional for cities to ban them or treat such facilities differently than residential, uh, single-family residences, particularly if there are six or less individuals residing at the property. And cities fought this all the way up to the Ninth Circuit and have spent millions upon millions of dollars trying to regulate them. And in the court system, those challenges have failed. Costa Mesa is currently still in litigation, bouncing back and forth between the Ninth Circuit and the Federal District Court as to what are appropriate, um, uh, procedures and restrictions that a city can put in place. One such thing is potentially a registration requirement. Another issue that Costa Mesa has tried to put in place is a distance buffer. Uh, in Costa Mesa, it's, uh, a thousand feet in between homes. The county of Orange also has a similar buffer. That issue and whether it's appropriate is still being litigated. So cities have been struggling with this. Also, at the state legislature, a number of, primarily Orange County, because it's, it's been an issue in Orange County cities, a number of legislators, state legislators in Orange County have tried to push through legislation, which gave cities more control over these types of situations. As of yet, there's been no real progress. I know they're still working on it. But that is the regulatory framework that we, the city, find ourselves in. We are either prohibited, prohibited specifically by state law or by judicial rulings as far as these types of facilities. Now, there are certain things that the city can do. One is, just like any other property, if it becomes a nuisance, if there are property maintenance issues and the property is not being taken care of, if there are noise issues, um, that, such as excessive partying or people outside drinking or stuff like that, then we can deal with it, just like we do any other residential property that isn't complying with our municipal code. But it has to be a property-specific failure rather than the mere existence of the sober living facility itself. So I've been talking with the city manager, and we're trying to brainstorm to put, uh, as many restrictions and as much city control as these types of facilities that we're allowed to do under state law. And I think the plan is to come back to you at a future city council meeting with some of our recommendations and options to give us, uh, as much as control as we can without subjecting ourselves to legal liability. So that is, in sum, my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Here are the rules. If you want to speak, you submit a blue card in the back. We're not going to have public outbursts. We all are concerned, every member in this room is concerned about sober living homes, okay? But we're not going to blurt out answers. Please, okay? Let's hold off on questions until, please, AJ, if you'd like to, Captain Patel, if you'd like to come up and do your, uh, your part, sir.
Hey, here we go. As far as the, before I get into my normal report, the, I mean, like I said, I think he said it best, the sober living home term is kind of thrown around. We don't know what this thing is going to be yet. So while I understand everybody's concern, I think we need to kind of pump the brakes and see what this thing actually is. Um, in my former life, I was, uh, in charge of behavioral health response for our department, and I've actually met with people that have run these type of places, and some of them have really good intentions about helping people. Um, so I don't want us, I don't want us to, you know, do the chicken little thing just yet. The concern is there, good to plan. Um, if something does happen, you know that my department will be there to document everything, to handle anything we need to handle, um, and that will give the city more tools to take any actions that they need to take. Nevermind. So I'm happy to take any questions on that. Like I said, um, the legal aspect of it is kind of hard to argue, but we're, we're here for anything that we can do legally to assist the city.
Thank you.
So Mayor, this is a, not an agendized item, so we shouldn't be having a discussion. We just wanted to present, because there's been a lot of questions and information. I've responded to a number of emails, and I know each one of you have received emails. We just wanted to clarify what our legal parameters are and what the city can or can't do. I think we, like you said, well, we all share our concerns for sober living homes, but our hands are proverbial tied in a lot of ways of what we can do. So, uh, we share the frustration, and I've voiced that to many, I know you all have as well, but I think to clear the air, the city has not approved anything, we've not permitted anything, we've not reg, we don't have the ability to even regulate it. So that's the message I hope people walk away with. The city has not done anything to perpetuate this. We are along for the ride, if you will, um, and I think the other issue is the fact that litigation, I know Costa Mesa and Newport Beach have spent millions. My counterpart in Newport Beach told me they spent $6 million on litigation on this very issue. So this is not something, $6 million would be our entire budget. So it's not something that we have the ability to litigate at that level. Uh, to the extent that Todd can verify this, if we are sued and we lose, we become liable potentially for the, uh, the legal expenses on the other side. So we might have to carry both expenses for ourselves and for the other parties involved. So that's something that I think other cities have sort of taken measures, Fountain Valley most recently, uh, but I've been contacted by the Fountain Valley city manager, as I've been contacted by the city manager of Costa Mesa, asking for cities to help participate in their defense financially. So they all know they're in litigation, it's coming, so I think that's the reality that's out there. Um, so I just wanted to share that with people. This is a very troublesome issue. We don't have a lot of local control, and I just think that there was a good educational process that we could take an opportunity, because people would be here. The sheriff and I have already talked about this. I'm not aware of any specific one operating yet here in Villa Park. We hear that it may, one, at least one, but we have had two in the past, and I pretty much suspect that most people in the room couldn't identify where they were, um, if you asked them, because it was several years ago, and I don't think we had but one or two complaints, and those were typically just about people smoking in the backyard. Um, so there are good ones, there are bad ones, and I think we're going to have to kind of roll with this one and, and deal. So I, I just share that with you, and I thank you for allowing us to kind of deviate from the norm here.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to end the staff and/or council discussion on this, but what we are going to do is agendize this for next meet, for next month's meeting to further the dialogue on this matter, because we, as a city, are very concerned about your property rights as well as the property rights of anybody and everybody. We're also concerned about the American With, Americans With Disabilities Act. We don't run a, want to run afoul of the law. We do not want to irresponsibly waste city funds on lawsuits that go nowhere, uh, but I think it's important that we examine exactly what we can and cannot, should and should not do, and we cannot do that tonight. I though, I do welcome each and every one of you, if you'd like to put your, uh, your words together and let us know how you feel, please fill out that card, and you'll have that opportunity in the public comment section. Okay?
Mayor, can I suggest that we let the public go, um, first, a little bit ahead of schedule?
Yes, yeah, they're going next. Thank you. Captain, thank you, sir.
Want me to get into my other stuff?
Uh, sure, go ahead, sir.
Well, we'll be brief, because I think we got some, uh, people that want to talk.
Yeah, okay.
Probably a lot more than I want to talk.
Okay.
Uh, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't a very bad month here. We had, uh, 237 total calls for service. The vast majority of those were proactive activity by the deputies. Um, a lot of suspicious activity calls, which I, like, I've said, I think every meeting, we welcome them. 99.9% of them end up being nothing, but we're never gonna, um, not respond to those type of things. Uh, we did have one residential burglary, um, and a couple of thefts that were more, like I said, and I spoke in previous times, that these crimes have opportunities, we have to limit these opportunities. And I'm not saying you deserve to be a victim, I'll never say that, but don't, limit the opportunities. Don't leave, uh, expensive handbag on your car seat filled with cash. Don't leave your garage door open with all your e-bikes lined up in a row for, so, I said, um, and I'm glad to say we recovered most of that property, um, but we do need to keep ourselves safe, harden our, um, exteriors of our, our residential, um, homes, um, put some window coverings up, make sure we get some cameras up, um, and I've, I think I've shown the picture before, but it's getting really, really prevalent, is people, they use, uh, burglary crews are hiding cameras in the bushes to keep an eye on you to get a pattern of behavior, and that's when they're going to strike. So, similar to like, social media posts, they do their work, too, and we got to, uh, limit that. So luckily, we've been pretty good, and my guys are doing a lot of good work behind the scenes. You'll, you'll be seeing some really, really good arrests on some of these coming up very soon, and I'll hopefully have that by next meeting. Uh, we did have an unfortunate incident, um, out on the, the main thoroughfare where a gentleman, uh, was in his scooter and, uh, basically drifted into traffic, and it was just an unfortunate accident. Uh, it was not a hit-and-run, uh, there's a lot of rumors about it being a hit-and-run. The, the person, the driver stayed back, and they felt, you know, just as bad as anybody. Um, so hopefully, keep our fingers crossed for that gentleman. He's, he's well-known in the community. I don't want to get too much into that, but people know him, people like him, and we're, we're hoping that he pulls through, uh, you know. Other than that, like I said, we had a lot of good, uh, uh, active arrests for narcotics. We've had, we've taken some weapons off the streets here. Just because we're Villa Park doesn't mean these bad people don't pass through. So my guys are catching them as they do it, so I'm, um, very proud of them, um, open to any questions. Uh, we do have, um, we're, uh, the city manager and I kind of, well, in, in the liet committee, we kind of, we're trying to figure out something we could do to kind of help out on the Fourth of July. As you know, Fourth of July is the highest call volume of, by far, of any day of the year for our dispatch center. And our dispatch center takes calls for every sheriff's department, contract city, and unincorporated area, so we're talking ton of calls. And as probably people in this room or in yourselves have experienced, you can be on hold for quite a while on the Fourth of July, because everything seems to be an emergency. So we decided to kind of get almost like a, a temporary tip line for the Fourth of July, and it's been posted, um, on the feeder. So I just want to make sure that people know that this is strictly for the, we're doing Third, Fourth, Fifth, Two and, uh, Two in the Morning, and it's strictly to, to monitor for those minor firework calls. Any emergencies, I don't want you sending a, a tip to an email address that's going to go to my deputies in the field, I want you to still call 911. If you want to avoid being on, uh, going through the, the phone decision tree, you know, pick your language into the first couple, uh, options, one for English, and just hit nine for a dispatcher, and then you'll, you'll skip three through eight, that will save you a lot of time and frustration. But again, we, I ask that you have patience on that day. It is America's birthday, we got to have a lot of tolerance for each other, people are having fun. Um, there's a lot of calls going in our dispatch center, and they're dealing with a lot on that night. Um, and they have to whittle their way through what's the firework stuff and where are the emergencies that are, you know, hope, you know, getting held up in traffic, right? So, um, happy, uh, ask any questions.
Before I go? Go ahead.
Um, I would just like to say, um, just for everyone here and everyone watching, that the email address is vp4th, number four, th, of july@ocsheriff.gov, just so people know right where to email, and it is our email tip line for the Fourth of July. And last year, you know, and the sheriff can back me up on this, we actually had very few calls. We had a couple residents that kind of got lost, you know, in the phone tree, but as far as calls that they actually received, they had four calls last year. And I think most everyone knows, it, it was practically a war zone out there. So only Safe and Sane are legal, only between the hours of noon and 10:00 PM on the Fourth of July. So anything outside of that time window or anything that shoots up in the air like Disneyland, those are all illegal, and definitely, please email the sheriff with your tips. Thank you.
And, you know, and crack me around, uh, in Orange, everything's illegal, correct? City of Orange?
At this point.
It is. So I would, if you know something is coming from outside of Villa Park, it probably wouldn't be, you know, we're not, I'm not going to send my deputies into the city of Orange to do firework enforcement. I'd rather them be here to do that stuff. So if you maybe want to, maybe the city, I'm sorry, I didn't think about it till now, post a number for the city of Orange Police Department to report incidents to them as well. I'm sure, I saw the billboard driving in this morning, a thousand dollar fine, Orange does not want fireworks, so I'm sure they, they'd be, they'd love to hear the tips themselves, too, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Oh, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
So I got this stupid thing on my face.
Mustache.
Mustache. And so the mayor and I were talked into doing a charity thing for over the last month, and I'm happy to say that we reached our, a hundred, over a hundred percent of our goal collectively. And the organization itself, um, their goal was 100,000, they actually raised 160,000, so they gave one of those big giant golf checks to Beyond Blindness. So the kids win, uh, my wife loses, we all, it's all good.
And you look a lot better with the mustache than I ever did.
Well, I'll agree with that.
Well done, sir. Thank you. Chief Weeden-Soler, thank you, sir.
Good evening. Uh, Mayor Rosini, Mayor Pro Tem Jones, and Council, thanks for the opportunity to be up here again. I'll be very brief. Uh, I know we got a lot of people that want to talk tonight. So in the last, since our last meeting on May 28th, we've had 78 units respond to 27 incidents in the city, uh, which is great news, uh, down below, below our annual average, which is outstanding. Now, a couple things to talk about, uh, we talked about it already, Fourth of July is coming up, big day for us as well, probably one of our highest call volume days of the year. Uh, please, I'll direct everybody to our website. Uh, there are shows throughout the county that everybody can go to if they don't stay in town. If I lived in Villa Park and fireworks were legal, I wouldn't leave either, so we just ask you to be safe, be smart. Uh, we were all kids once, so I, I encourage the adults to make sure they keep close eye on their kids, don't teach them bad habits. Uh, we will be there when 911 is called, certainly to help, as we always do, and we've got our, uh, community risk reduction folks out in force. Uh, they've been out doing the weed abatement and making sure the weeds are low, and so I just encourage everybody to use them as they're supposed to be used, right? On the street, away from any of the brush, that's what we want to keep it away from. So, all in there in case, unless there's any questions from you.
Go ahead.
Um, can you tell us about the Fill the Boot event?
Oh, yes, ma'am, thank you for asking. So every year, uh, one of our biggest, uh, biggest events that we do will be out on the street, uh, the week, next weekend, or the 28th and 29th, uh, this, this weekend, you'll see firefighters probably standing around with their, with their boots out. They're out to collect money for muscular dystrophy. It started out as Jerry's Kids years ago, and it's our biggest, uh, biggest fundraiser for them for the year. Uh, will be throughout the entire county at different intersections, so I'll apologize now for the traffic, and I'll apologize to you, Captain Patel, for any traffic that we cause. We'll be here, uh, I forget the address on San Diego, but basically here in the shopping center, uh, on those two days, so please come out if you can give, but it's just good, just go up, say hi to the firefighters, they'll enjoy that.
I would highly recommend, um, that folks are careful.
Yes.
Because of scammers that are out there, but at the same time, please support OCFA and their valiant efforts, so, thank you.
They'll be, they'll be in uniform like I am with their helmets on, holding, hopefully holding a, a boot, that's the whole idea behind Fill the Boot. They take one of their turnout boots and fill it. Thank you for the question, that was great.
Will there be a truck present or other vehicle?
They'll have their, they'll be rotating our engines through, and so you'll see Engine 23 there, probably see Truck 32 rotating through as well, so.
Okay.
Because it's an all-day event, so we usually have a couple hours per, per unit rotating through.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have public comments. At this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve, we have a few. Lisa, if you wouldn't mind.
The first speaker is Dorothy LaFaro at 10551 Potter Circle.
Please come forward, and, uh, since we've already been given your name, if you would just give us, if you would care.
I used to be tall, then I got old.
Your address would be great, if you feel comfortable.
My address?
Please.
10551 Potter Circle, Villa Park.
Thank you.
Um, first of all, thank you so much, all of you, for filling us in on what we've been given as far as these sober homes. We saw the sign out in front of this house on Lincoln, we all passed it, you actually had to stop the car to read it, but it says, "Coming Soon," like there was something big, and then it went to describe sober living home. Couple of things scared us, that's where children walk back and forth to school every day, and that's a concern for, I'm a grandmother, but for parents who have kids going back and forth to the school. We all have done a lot of research, and one of my first questions was, and you were talking about Fountain Valley, they did pass a city ordinance that requires operators to get a special use permit. Can we not do that?
Go ahead.
Yes, they, they did pass that, but when they passed it, the council acknowledged that they're going into litigation, so that will be litigated, and as we indicated, many of the cities, Costa Mesa has passed things, but they are also in litigation. So the council could be, adopt that, but we'd be subject to litigation, and we'd end up paying the expenses. So that would be the prerogative of the council if they want to pursue something now, but we would, and like I said, the Fountain Valley city manager has already asked other cities to help pay for their defense. Um, so I think that.
It's like we're damned if we do, and we're damned if we don't, right?
That's the case. Now, now that, conversely, if Costa Mesa wins, we can adopt something without having to spend the money.
Right.
So, I mean, there's, there's the other side of things from that thing. We have, um, I mentioned that, that Newport Beach spent $6 million, that's larger than our entire budget. So in perspective, we don't have those kinds of means to fund those kinds of litigation, and there is no cap on limited, on, on litigation costs. So to the extent that it runs up the bill, we could be liable for whatever, it's a, it's not something we get to decide. So my recommendation is that we, uh, support, um, Fountain Valley in spirit, but I don't think we, it's like, I don't, I wouldn't recommend that we step out on that ledge, if you will, until some actions taken, because other cities have had very, as Todd has mentioned, the city attorney, very limited success at this point. Despite what cities may have done, they've had limited success in those being sustained or upheld.
So in other words, if, if, uh, they open or occupy one of these, uh, homes, we have no knowledge of who's there, who's running it? Well, all we know are that it has to be six or less.
Just as we would not know residents. Like if a resident moves in, we're not, they don't have to tell us who's living in that residence, so we have to treat them exactly the same.
Okay, it's also my understanding, too, that, uh, they have to have somebody that's there supervising all these people.
That we don't have the ability to regulate that, so I don't have the authority to, to go in and check on that. The state has the authority to do that, uh, but they have not, they've removed that ability from the state to do, so I, from the local entities to do. So I have no ability, if we knock on the door, they don't have to answer the door.
So we don't know, they say there's six people, there could be 10, and we don't know.
Um, unfortunately, that's the reality under the current law.
Something else that, in our research, we discovered, too, that if they are giving them any medical help, injections, whatever, then that constitutes a business.
If they have a medical on site, that would be an issue that, again, would be, would be licensed by the state, not by the city, not by the county health department. We've checked with the county health department, and they have no, and they have no involvement in licensure, so that would be the state Department of Health Services, or, there's another department up there that, it doesn't come to mind, but the state would regulate that and would monitor that, because there would have to be some sort of, if there have controlled substances, they have to have, uh, supervision of those controlled substances, et cetera, and I, I, we don't have the ability or.
But according to what we, our research said, that if they are in fact doing that, now it's more like a medical facility and therefore a business now in a residential area.
Like I said, we don't have the ability to walk in and investigate that.
Right, no, I understand that.
So the state does have the ability to do that, and that's what I've encouraged many of the residents to do, is contact the state. They have the authority to go in and do those things, um, but I, just like I can't walk into your house and say, "What are you doing in your house?" As a city.
You would be welcome, my husband's a good cook.
I'm sure we would, everybody in Villa Park's that way, but unfortunately, the law dictates otherwise on this one, and I, I empathize, I understand, but it's a tremendous frustration I think we all share.
Yeah, I understand, too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Next.
Cindy Boyce.
Okay, that's great. And honestly, folks, if somebody has basically in essence said what you wanted to say, um, it's fine if you, um, either want to just hold off or wait till the next meeting, or submit something in writing to us, okay? So thank you. Thank you.
Lawrence Talby.
Here we are. Is that good?
Perfect, sir.
All right. Yeah, again, on the sober living rehab topic, we can all hem and haw about how frustrating it is, because it is. But I just kind of wanted to, and I'm not expecting any sort of answer right now. But perhaps by the next meeting, we could have a more focused and formal discussion about potential future action. And, you know, Steve, you've been great and putting up with all of us. So thank you. And I've only nudged it once, but I can be a real pain in the bum. So I just kind of wanted to know as of right now, like what the litigation looks like, like who's the plaintiff, who's suing who? What's, what's the lawsuit actually look like?
They, I believe Todd can fill us in on those. Todd, are you there with us?
Yes.
Can you give us an overview of the litigation that is pending with Costa Mesa and, and/or other entities? Who and what they're litigating?
So the latest legal issue is a bit procedural. A trial court ruled that a sober living home in Costa Mesa did not submit actual proof that the individuals there had the disability of substance abuse addiction. Therefore, they did not create a prima facie case that they were covered by the ADA or the FHA, American With Disabilities Act, Fair Housing Act. So the trial court actually stated that Costa Mesa won the case at the trial court level by not allowing a certain sober living home. That went up to the Ninth Circuit, which is the federal appeals court, basically for the part of the United States west of the Rocky Mountains. And the Ninth Circuit is known for a lot of, let's say, interesting decisions. But the Ninth Circuit ruled that sober living homes do not have to actually prove that the people they serve are disabled. The mere fact that the business itself is a sober living facility is evidence in fact of the people that do live there being disabled, and no further proof is required. So the sober living home in this case, the Costa Mesa case, did have a valid claim under federal law and state law. So it sent, the Ninth Circuit sent the case back to the trial court level to now move further and to do an examination of some of the things that Costa Mesa was trying to require for these facilities. Namely, a registration requirement, a buffer zone, things like that. So that is the current status of the litigation. Costa Mesa lost on procedural grounds, and now it's back in the trial court level. After it's been established that these types of facilities are entitled to protection, now it's just what type of tools does a city still have to do something, if anything, about such facilities? That's the status.
Am I allowed to ask Todd, like, direct questions? Can I do that?
That's up to Todd, but go ahead, sir.
So is it just looking like in a perfect world, we would have to get like a reexamination of the ADA definition? And somehow getting the Ninth Circus to, or the federal, another federal court to revise the definition where addiction is not protected? Is that like ultimately what it would look like would be necessary to give citizens like me and everyone else who's upset about it some sort of relief?
You need two things. It's, it would be helpful if there was a different legal definition under federal law. The only entity obviously that can overrule the Ninth Circuit is the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court, even though it was requested to do so by the City of Costa Mesa and other cities, did not accept the writ of certiorari, i.e. the Supreme Court let the Ninth Circuit ruling stand. Hopefully, eventually, the Supreme Court will take up the issue and potentially rule in a different manner. Much like they finally took up the issue of homelessness and whether people have a constitutional right to live in the street. And a decision on that should be coming down any day now, probably tomorrow. So that is one avenue. The second avenue is really a state political issue. And if the state would put in some regulations, which the state found to be reasonable requirements and allowances for city control over these facilities, then under state law, those would probably hold up. So it's really a two-pronged attack in both the federal and the state system that we can hope for and that people have been pushing for.
How much time do I have?
About one minute.
And, and just, in a nutshell, what, what would it look like to pursue option two? Is that like potentially putting pressure on like a congressman or congresswoman or?
Option two would be state. We all have state representatives. So a majority of the state would have to approve a legislation. We have, obviously Villa Park has representatives in both state assembly and state senate. And it would be a majority on both sides of the House and then subsequently signed by the governor to create a law. So the chances of that happening, you probably have as good a guess as I do, but that would be the process.
And we'll examine that further, I think, next month. I think there's, there's a discussion to be had on that. I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole on what the city can or what the state can. I'm being deferential to having public comments in an open forum and freedom of speech. But I want to be hesitant, I want to be careful about arguing or discussing too much about non-agendized items. So, but your point is very well taken. And I think next month, we'll be able to have a much more open forum about this. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate the time. Thank you.
I appreciate your reference to the circus. Next.
Scott Brophy.
Hello. Lived in, moved here in nineteen ninety nine, been here a long time. Great city. Been involved with a lot of sports, kid stuff. And I just don't understand why this has even got as far as it has. This is a money grab. That's all it is. And now we don't have any rights of who comes and lives. Not that I'm trying to keep out anybody from coming to the city. I don't understand why we don't have any rights to keep out a business. This is a business. We do the Airbnb stuff. We shut that down. Business. What, what am I missing here? A question for you. You had said that there was a sober living place in the city. What was prior that nobody knew about?
Actually, Steve said that. But I, but I'll echo his things. I haven't come from that world. There are, these places are all over the place. And some are a little more, have problems. And most of them, they just fly, they fly under the radar.
For perspective, Fountain Valley has fifty five sober living homes. Costa Mesa is probably closer to a hundred. Anaheim is over two hundred, I'm guessing. The two previous locations were on more to the central eastern portion of the city. They, both homes were sold eventually. The owner was an out of area owner and moved on. So the difference.
The next person, huh? Why didn't the next person do the same thing? Make it a money grab rehab house.
They didn't share with us why they sold it or didn't sell it. And I don't have, you know, if someone sells, you sell your house, I don't have to ask you why. And you don't have to answer if I do. So they sold it and they got their money from their investment and moved on maybe for whatever reason. I, I can't answer with respect to that. So I mean, this is a pervasive issue throughout California.
San Juan Capistrano, Dana Point, Laguna Beach, previously mentioned Newport Beach. It's all over Orange County.
And frankly. In Beverly Hills, I have the assistant city manager and I are friends, and she was telling me that there's just a huge number of people who want to, you know, and, and was it Playa del Rey or something along those, they're, they're all over. And California is, you know.
Especially Southern California for a lot of different reasons.
Would any one of you up here be happy to say, oh yeah, I'm, I'm, next door neighbor's a sober living house. Got one down the street. We're happy because it's generating money. Nobody's going to be happy. Okay. The other thing is, is how do we, we don't have any rights. I get that. How do we regulate who's running these things and if they're even qualified to get somebody sober? I mean, could be your gardener driving down the street on his bicycle. Hey, you want a job? Yeah, come on in. We'll pay you good money. Not qualified. Come on. This, this is a joke.
Yeah, we, we understand your concerns. We can't, for procedural issues and legal issues, address those at this point in time. I would invite everybody, and I know it's a pain in the neck, we're crazy enough to volunteer to do this. But I would invite everybody to come back next month. And we can have a much more robust discussion about this. Not saying that we're going to fix this. That's, that would be far from the truth. But we can have a much more robust discussion about this and/or who you need to contact that is not on this dais. And who you might want to look towards with your votes, because that's the bottom line. That's the bottom line. Learn about the law, learn about the votes, learn about what we can and cannot do. So, but I appreciate your time. Unfortunately.
We don't, if we don't stop this now or try and do something about it, it's going to be the next thing. I mean, maybe a drug house or prostitution house, or who knows where it's, where it's going to stop. We need to address it.
Appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you very much. Next.
Mary Nacy Ambram.
Going once, going twice, no sale. Next.
That's all for public comments.
Okay.
We did have a resident who is not going to be here, maybe they're, Sanjay Kuttani. If you want to, can you read that? She asked if they would, if they weren't here, we could read it. So they're not here and I want to read it into the record.
Thank you.
Dear Mr. Franks, I'm writing you, writing to you as a concerned resident of Villa Park regarding the recent announcement of an adult male sober house opening in our community. While I understand the need for such facilities and support the rehabilitation of individuals struggling with addiction, I have significant concerns about the impact of this home will have in our neighborhood. Firstly, our neighborhood is residential, and introducing a rehabilitation facility could alter the character and safety of our community. Many residents, including families with young children, seniors, and individuals who value the peace and security of our area, are worried about the potential increase in crimes and disturbances associated with such facilities. Secondly, property values in our neighborhood are significant, are significant concern. The president, presence of a drug rehabilitation home can negatively impact property values, which is a critical issue for homeowners who have invested their life savings into their properties. A decline in property values can lead to broader economic repercussions for our community. Moreover, our neighborhood lacks the infrastructure and resources to support a drug rehabilitation facility. We do not have the necessary medical facilities, counseling centers, or public transportation options that such a home would require. This could lead to an increased burden in our local services and potentially strain our community's resources. While I recognize the importance of providing rehabilitation services, I believe that such facilities should be located in areas better suited for them, both in terms of infrastructure and community readiness. Placing a rehabilitation home in our neighborhood is not in the best interest of our community or the individual seeking help, who would benefit more from a location equipped to meet their needs. I urge the city council to reconsider the placement of this male, adult male drug rehabilitation home in Villa Park on corner of Lincoln and Cedar Hill Circle. I propose that alternative locations be evaluated that would better serve the needs of those undergoing rehabilitation without compromising the safety, character, and property values of our residential community. Thank you for considering my concerns. I hope we can work together to find a solution that supports both our community and those in need of rehabilitation services. Sincerely, Sanjay Kuttani.
Thank you very much.
May I make a statement briefly?
Yes.
So I, I want to say thank you to everyone who has reached out to me, texted me, called me, emailed me. I am happy to see that, that, that there are people here tonight. Because unfortunately for this issue, voices like mine aren't going to matter. And I've already tried. I've gone up to Sacramento and gotten thrown out of the Public Safety Committee Chair's office. It's going to require all of us to start making those phone calls to our state senators, to our assembly members, even to our Congress individuals. And nobody wants to see this. And I think you hit the nail on the head. It is a money grab. And there are, I'm going, and there are these private entities that, you're right. We don't know if they're actually certified, if they're licensed, if they're even trained. But unfortunately, you've got a lot of oversea investors that come, realize this is a money grab. You can get twenty thousand dollars a head for an occupant. And then there's something called curbing. And we end up with people out in the middle of the street when the money runs out. And then our law enforcement officers have to become all of a sudden mental health professionals. So unfortunately, the city can't do anything. I'm really hoping everyone shows up next month. I have a couple of ideas. I think it would be nice if the mayor.
Yep.
Had a, had a coffee with the mayor or some sort of forum to where we could come up with ideas.
We will discuss this further next month.
One last thing. So I think we should look at doing an ordinance that's going to limit the distance.
Discuss this, we're, we're not going to discuss this any further.
And perhaps, people don't like it, but maybe a homeowners association, which does have more control that we can discuss. So I really appreciate everybody coming up.
All right. If we can now move on, please. Everybody's had an opportunity for public comment. Correct me if I'm wrong. There's no late individuals. Okay, all right. Thank you for your comments. I do want to, did want to make sure we maintained our procedural and legal safety zone, so to speak. Next up, unless I'm mistaken, we have public hearings. Now we will move into our agendized public hearings. Our first hearing is the review to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
This is the monthly item we put on the agenda to expedite meetings. We'd recommend approval.
Council members, do you have any questions? Nope. Okay. Anybody in the public want to speak about this? Highly unlikely. All right. Do I have a motion?
No move.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Everybody, please vote.
Pass this by zero.
Next up, item number two, our next public hearing. Our next hearing is the adoption of fiscal year twenty two, excuse me, twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five operating budget and seven-year capital improvement program. I will now open the hearing. Please give the staff report.
Thank you, mayor. This is, this is a culmination of a lot of efforts. We've had a, in April and May, we had a budget workshops, or two budget workshops. This is our budget that will be effective as of July first of twenty twenty four, carrying us through June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. We are required by law to adopt a budget every year by June thirtieth of this year, of each year. So by adoption tonight, you would be fulfilling your legal obligation. The other part of this is we have a gain limit, which is set forth by state law about how our appropriation, what level appropriations we can or cannot have. We cannot exceed it. We have, do a calculation each year and we are well within our legal allowed appropriations limits. So the budget itself is about six million, one, a little over six million in expenditure, revenues, and expenditures of seven point two million. Everyone says, how do you do that? Basically, it's revenues that we didn't spend last year that we carry forward into the next year. We also have a very, very, very healthy reserve, about fifty percent of our operating fund of two point five million dollars. So this budget here lives within those constraints. We have a very balanced budget. We have, the only debt we have is associated with our pension liabilities, which is a tremendous accomplishment compared to all the others. And toward that end, we already have between seven and eight hundred thousand, depending on the investments performance that month, of advanced payments we've already set aside in a trust fund to pay for that. So we are, of our obligations for that, we're in the, probably the low eighties percentile funded. Anything considered in a retirement system that's above seventy, seventy-five percent is considered healthy. We're very healthy. There are other cities that are probably paying the bare minimum that are in the fifties and sixties. So we are very fortunate. Several questions have come up, and I, the one that sticks in my mind in our last council meeting, last council workshop, Mayor Pro Tim Jones asked me, are we in a good situation? We're not doing what other cities around us have done. And the answer is, yes, we are doing things our way, the Villa Park way, very conservative. We are conservative in our estimate of revenues and we are, we expect higher expenditures than we typically have. So we are doing well. We are also not relying on reserves. So Lee and I have done a five-year planned projection after. So Lee and I have done a five-year planned projection after this year, we go out five years, and we will still have, in five years, the same level of reserves we currently do, which is telling you right there that we're living within our resources, and that's very, very important. Uh, if, if we were ever in the mood to borrow, which I hope we never are in my tenure, um, we would have the very, very highest bond rating you could get because of that. So we live within our resources. So other cities will typically have borrowed from other funds to, to pay for it. We are not doing any of that. Uh, we keep our restricted funds for sewers in the sewers. We keep all of our, you know, all those things we're supposed to do in the appropriate, um, categories, and we report them. We audit them once a year. Those audits are online. If anyone ever wants to spend some time and has insomnia, go for it, because they are not very, uh, very easy to read. But I think what, what the point of this is, is we have a balanced budget, we are in a very good, solid financial position, and we have done everything as a city and as a council that we can do to maintain that. There's always the unknown. You never know what happens. We could have tornadoes or natural disasters or whatever, which could affect our ability. We'd have to respond to something. But I think we have that reserve in case something happens. So, um, for instance, if we were to completely lose all our revenue, we could still continue operating for six months without a blip, which is considered very, very solid by the Government Finance Officers Association. So we're, we're, uh, I think we're in a very excellent position. Uh, the second thing that we have to do, or the things you have to do as part of this adoption, you adopt a resolution that adopts the budget and approves the appropriations limits, which are formulaic, and Lee can go to excruciating detail if you want to hear what they are, uh, but we're, that's the GAN limit I previously referred to. The second thing they have to do is adopt a resolution which, um, sets the salary and benefit rates of all classes of employment, which has to be updated every year, uh, which we go through, and that's the personnel salary resolution, if you will, uh, that most cities have. And that just determines what we can or cannot pay our employees. So we update that, and this year, we have built in a 2% increase for staff, which, given a CPI that's far in excess, I think we're being very, very careful and, and cautious in that regard. So, um, very candidly, you can see what almost everyone has paid their cap, and then online, every January, report to the state, so if they want to see actual salaries, you can go ahead and see that. Uh, but the budget is online. If anyone wants to see it, it will be showing right now as the proposed, um, budget, but after adoption, hopefully this evening, we'll have it changed to the adopted, and anyone can go through, digest it, ask any questions. It's, what, 100 pages long? It's very, very voluminous. But we tried to establish, we bought a system a few years ago that makes it easier to read, um, and easier to digest for the, for the regular person, and look at the things they want to see. As part of that, we also identify the capital projects plans we have going forward, um, the, the capital improvement plan, and that's consistent with prior actions of the council. Typically, a capital improvement for us are sewer projects and road projects. That's pretty much what we do for capital improvements. Anyway, with that, uh, I want to also just sort of end by saying that it's a team effort. First of all, it's led by Lee, as the, our, um, finance director. We're extremely fortunate to have a CPA, uh, of her caliber working for the city. Most cities don't hold a candle to the ability that we have, and we're a small city, so we have very talented. We also have Charisse, Alyssa, and Ashley, who aren't here, who are tremendously, um, helpful and have learned budgets and doing a great job. So it's a team effort, and all the respective departments, you know, the engineering and, uh, e- even Mike, they talked to about getting his projects and things, et cetera. So we've, we have a very much a team effort and are very proud of this group. This is by far, and I've done this for 43 years now, worked in a budget, this is by far the best, most synonymous group that I've ever worked with, and they work very well together. They all work exceedingly at a high level, uh, and are all willing to take on whatever task the other person needs. So I'm, I'm very, very proud. It isn't me you're looking at, this is them, and I think Lee is, sort of takes the lead on this, and I'm, I'm very, I, with, with great pride, I'd recommend approval of recommendation one or two, which are adoptions of the respective resolutions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or, on the council? Go ahead.
Um, so I know I've already, um, talked to you both about this, um, but just, um, for the public, can you tell us why the projections for licenses and permits is just over 8% lower than our previous budget?
Sure. Um, and we've talked about it before, and, and, uh, we, those primarily relate to building permits, conditional use permits, um, encroachment permits, et cetera. It's also includes fireworks permits, but that's a very constant, because we only have three booths. Our building permits typically are variable, and they're going to, they're going to go up and down. Right now, we're experiencing a lull, if you will, they're almost 50% down for the month of June. What that does is each, with each less building permit, you bring in less revenue. So that's what's happening right now. Uh, and typically, in talking to our, uh, Bill Terran, he tells me that as interest rates stay high, uh, you typically have lower and lower people wanting to redo projects. So that's a fluctuating number, it's cyclical. We will, as, hopefully, when interest rates drop, you'll see a lot more activity. Uh, but his analogy is, if someone's buying a $2 million house, they're not going to spend $200,000 on a reno, they're going to wait till they can do it for 150,000 with lower interest rates or something. So that's what's happening. Uh, so one of the things, as a consequence, because of the way we're restructuring, and I mentioned to you, we have the ability now with contract to potentially adjust our staffing levels in accordance with this, so we don't just spend money, the same amount of money, even though we don't have the same amount of volume or activity. So we will be looking at that carefully, and in fact, the first day we're going to try, and I might as well announce this, is July 5th, runs on a Friday, that would typically be a day open, but it's a very slow business day for us. So we're not going to pay to have a, you know, our contract, uh, office person stand at the front counter and wait for people to come in, which they won't come in. We'll still have planning, and we'll still have engineering to do their regular tasks. But we're going to try that and see, and so July is going to be kind of a test. If the rate, if the, uh, building permits stay low, then we will probably adjust a longer-term, you know, idea whether that means three days less hours, or two days and same hours, or something. We'll, we'll play around with that to see what the volume is. Um, one of the things is, as you see, people say, oh, there's still a lot of projects going on. Those projects are probably in process, and they've already issued their building permits. So if you look, just as a number, we had in 22, 23, $175,000 of building permit, uh, volume. We are now estimating for this year, $143,000 of volume. And that's not because anybody's doing different, it's just they're doing less. So in answer to your question, I hope that kind of targets what you're looking for.
Yes, thank you. And then why is miscellaneous income down over 77%?
Yeah, so you remember the old truck Mike had? Well, we sold it, and we bought a new truck with our AQMD money, so, and our, our, so we had budgeted that. So we did actually get money, and the year before that, you're saying what was high the year before that? We sold the two sedans we had when we bought the smaller ones. So those reflect that. The other thing that's reflected in our miscellaneous revenues is, uh, water rebate. So typically, they look the readers and they do adjust, just like you do at home. They do a reconciliation at year-end, and they'll say, oh yeah, we have that money. So typically, the, 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 what, Serrano will repay us. We do not budget for that anticipation, because we just don't know, and that's one of the ways we can be conservative, is not anticipating revenue we may not receive. We're not going to sell any more trucks right now, so we're, that number's going to go down, and we're not going to anticipate water rebates at this point. So, uh, we'll see where that goes, but that accounts for the, the huge variance. It's, huge variance seems variance, but it's, it's really, it went from basically, uh, 40, um, what is it? I forget the number off the top of my head, uh, 33,000 to 5,000, which is the sale of the vehicle.
Yeah. Well, and thank you so much, because, you know, when I'm out talking to residents, a lot of them feel that our income always increases all the time. And so just letting people know that sometimes we have these drops, and now with our new arrangement with planning, you know, we can maybe make up some of that. So I thought those points were important. So thank you so much.
I just would like to, uh, thank staff for all the excellent work that they've done on this, and, and I'd also like to comment, and, and thank you for your question. I think it's a great question. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, the, the main reason why we have such high interest rates is because of inflationary concerns, um, in the overall economy. Um, that's kind of a rhetorical question, I guess, but if I'm wrong, please let me know. Building materials are, are not immune to that. And that is largely, in my opinion, uh, and, and those that are in the real estate industry, and the construction industry, and the construction industry is now experiencing unfortunately some layoffs, uh, due to this, uh, and that's really a terrible thing. Um, it's not getting quite the, the media attention you would expect, but I, I do have, at least anecdotally, quite a few, uh, individuals that I've spoken to that either own companies or employed by companies that are experiencing, uh, that hardship, uh, due to the inflationary concerns within the economy. And to your point, um, uh, the reason why there is such, um, high interest rates is to try to control and curb, uh, the inflation that was interjected in the economy. So hopefully, uh, uh, with, uh, time that will pass, hopefully sooner rather than later. Is that correct, Lee?
Good evening, Mayor. Yes, you're correct. And then also, like, uh, I mean, in addition to that too, with the inflations from like previous years, all the CPI has increases, but all the increases, like, it has never come down. So what it is, is just, even though the CPI for this year has decreased compared to last year and previous years from 7%, now it's down to like 3%. But the prices don't come down, they're just built upon it. So, yes, you're correct, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilman Pitt, sir.
Yes, thank you. Um, I think it's evident that when our way of life here in Villa Park is affected, we fill this room, just like we did an hour, a half hour ago. People are very passionate about things going on in our community that impact our way of life. But if you look around the room right now, there's not very many people. Why is that? We're talking about the budget, and how we maintain and take care of the city, and create a way of life in Villa Park. And I have to say, you all do an amazing job. That's why there's no one sitting in the room. That's why people don't question what we do, because you all do such an amazing piece of work, every single day. I mean, Mike, everybody, I mean, all of you. So I think our way of life is special in Villa Park, and people want to live here because of that. And you all make it happen every single day, and I want to thank you for that.
Here, here. Uh, Councilman Miles, do you have anything?
Just want to make the motion to, um, accept.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. There's no public comment on this matter. Seeing none, hearing none, no further discussion, my colleagues. Uh, everybody, please vote.
Passes five zero.
Thank you. All right. Next up, items three through six, and as Councilman Pitts pointed out, the agenda says three through five. Kudos to you for finding the error, sir. Consent calendar, items three through six. Uh, we will consider our consent calendar, all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items, numbers three through six, that you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
I move to adopt all six, or four?
Any members of the public mention it?
No.
Okay. All right. Uh, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion on a second to approve items three through six. Please vote.
Passes five zero.
All right. New business, item seven. Our first item is the adoption of the resolutions pertaining to the general municipal election on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. Steve, please give the staff report.
Thank you. Um, as you know, um, we will have an election, uh, in, um, November 5th, 2024. That will be a, a nationwide election, president, et cetera, but it also is, is coincides with our city municipal election in which two seats would be, uh, filled, um, or open, because both, uh, Mayor Rossini and Councilmember Pitts will term out by city ordinance, uh, our city code, so there'll be two seats open. This action that is required by law is one that we have to declare that the election is, um, open and that will comply with the state laws. Two is, we have to comply with the registrar's, uh, candidate statements requirements. And third, we have to request that the city, the county board of supervisors consolidate this election with their election process, so that we don't have to run something independently, which would, not something I'd ever want to do. Uh, but with that, in that regard, this is routine, we've done this every election so far. These three resolutions basically kick off the process. So what does it mean, bottom line? Candidates can take out papers June 15th, and they have to submit them by, I think it's August 7th, if I'm not mistaken. We'll be widely publicizing that on the feeder, and, uh, the, um, the requirements set forth of candidacy will be laid out in that manner. But this basically starts the election process for the November 5th, 24 election in Villa Park. We can't control what happens elsewhere, but we certainly, uh, move forward here.
Excuse me. Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of staff? No? There's no members of the public that are here to speak on this or have any comments? I don't see any. Um, any further comments? No? Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Please vote. Item eight. Oh, sorry about that.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies. Item eight, uh, we will now discuss the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no items to report here, except that, um, my preference wouldn't have been here to meet you tonight, but, but I am, because I wanted to make sure that, that one, we have the budget, and this is an important issue, and we had a little bit of technical difficulties.
Thank you.
Two, I just wanted to mention that, um, we have a number of issues coming up. We will be, the, uh, fireworks, we've already talked about, which will be reviewed, we're going to be, um, monitoring those. I think they start sales, do you know when they start?
Sunday.
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 Sunday, we'll be starting sales. So please, I would encourage residents, if they see or hear anything, please call. Last year, we don't, we can't act if we don't hear, and typically, these things happen in the evenings, they don't happen in the daytime when staff are here. So just let us know, and hopefully, we've got a little better way to communicate this year, in hopes that we do, but it doesn't work if they don't help us, if the public doesn't help us, so I would encourage that. Um, secondly, um, the housing element, uh, good news and bad news will be moving, you'll be hearing more about this summer, we're going to have to start moving forward on it. Um, and the bad news is, the primary, uh, you remember Dave, uh, passed away, who was our main consultant? He had had a, uh, kidney transplant, and unfortunately, passed away. So we are working with the team at Kim Lee Horn and moving forward, but you'll be hearing some more this summer. I get people asking me, where are we with that? The issue that stands there is the rezoning process, and that needs to be done. Uh, we've worked with HCD, we know what we have to do, uh, and it's a process we'll have to go through to update our general plan and the zoning requirement. So, uh, it's very consistent with the actions we've already submitted, there's no change or, uh, we still are statutorily comply, compliant with, uh, state law, but we are not certified because we have not done the zoning related. So that's going to come next, so I would expect probably the heaviest action coming in the fall intentionally, because in the summer, Villa Park is pretty slow, and people are vacationing, and we don't want to do this kind of thing when people aren't around. So that's what you're going to see. Um, the other thing that's taken a little bit of time is obviously the sober living. I appreciate the, the council being very, um, open to talking about it and doing things. Uh, I, again, uh, we'll try and do what we can. It's sort of a moving target, because like Todd says, there's litigation, and that litigation may change. Um, lastly, I would, did want to share the homeless, like Todd mentioned, the Supreme Court may issue the, um, decision regarding homeless. That's the Boise decision, if you will. In other words, do you have to have alternate beds to move some, to ticket somebody or cite them for vagrancy or whatever? Um, so if that comes down, so is homelessness a right, or is it something you have to protect? So that is something that we have invested, and we continue to invest in what they call the North Service Planning Area, which, um, is the northern city. We have at least two homeless shelters that we, we contribute toward. northern city. We have at least two homeless shelters that we, we contribute toward. We have not, since inception, used any beds, but it is something to, in order to our officers to have that ability, we have to make sure they have opportunities under the current law. So if that law changes, we will discuss that. The other thing that's happening is the cost of operating those shelters is rapidly increasing. I'm going to say two or threefold, where we were originally paying 10 million, we're probably going to be paying $45 million in a year. And that's partly because SB2 revenue and is not coming from the state. So those of you who have contacts with the state, if you could please let them know that SB2, that's what the SB2 revenue, and they tripped it up there, said if you don't have an approved housing element, you don't get SB2 revenue. We don't have a certified housing element, so we're not doing that. But most of the cities in Orange County don't have a certified housing element. So it's, it's kind of the state holding back on that. But 45,000 starts to be very expensive, especially when we've never used a bed. So I have been exploring other options, and Lee and I have been talking about what other options and when. So you might see something coming later this summer, which addresses that issue for us relative to paying and moving on to a different alternative model of how we deal with that, because we can't absorb those kinds of increases when we have revenue growth that's four or five percent, and we have cost increases that are 300 percent. That's, it just becomes problematic. So those are the things I have. On a personal note, my, I'm here. I've survived three weeks out from back surgery. I hope to be back on a more regular basis in the next couple of weeks, permitting, the doctors. We'll see what they say. But my goal is to be able to travel to see my son play in two and a half, three weeks. So I'm trying to do all the right things, and I appreciate you guys all bearing with me. But I'm available for texts and emails and calls if you need anything, and the staff have been great. They're very competent. As I've said before, they almost don't need me. I get in their way a lot of times. So luckily, we have such good staff here. But anyway, please don't hesitate. Business as usual. Nothing should slow down in my absence. If it is, call me, call them, and we'll take care of it. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and a tremendous amount of thanks to you and Dee Dee, obviously, for getting you here. We have an abundance of respect for you and what you go, what you're going through, and sacrifices you're making for us. So thank you. And feel free to stand, because I know it's challenging at times. So.
Question?
Go ahead.
Is now a time to request that we dive into putting an agenda item on regarding perhaps coming up with something about distancing between futures?
Like I mentioned, I think what, and I know the mayor wants to have one next month, and I'm going to talk to Todd. The issue about an ordinance, you have to, if we're going to adopt something and want to adopt something and take action, we may have to give ourselves a little longer than that, because you have to do public noticing in advance of publishing, so we have to publish that. So I think the issue is too, the distancing is still in the appellate court right now. So I think we want to play with that a little bit. So Todd and I are kind of doing that. But I think what we're planning to come back, I think that direction is clear from all of you, that we want to come back. It's clear from the audience, and it's clear from staff perspective. I don't think it's very productive to have this kind of issue hanging out there. What we can do, and I'm going to tell you my approach, and if the council wants to do it different, I'm going to lay out. I'm not going to recommend any sort of action where we know potential litigation or is currently in place or pending. I don't think that would be the fiscally prudent thing to do, and given my job, primary job, one, is to take care of the city both financially and physically, I can't recommend that. So if something's still pending or something along those lines where we know the appellate court's, any decisions then coming out. But yeah, we're planning to come forward with something. Keep in mind, and I will say this, even if we adopt an ordinance, it takes two readings, and it doesn't take effect until 30 days after the second reading. So the very soonest you could take action, have an ordinance in place, is three months from now.
And that's to your point. I just want to say thank you for, for pointing that out. My, my thoughts are, now that we're discussing this, is just to have that dialogue, have that discussion. I share exactly your mindset of being cautious and fiscally prudent and avoiding litigation at virtually all costs. But since it is, does take quite a long time to actually adopt something, might as well kind of begin that discussion and give those folks that were in the audience today and perhaps others that opportunity to be heard. And that should give us all 30 days or so to kind of brainstorm and whatever ideas you may have, whatever ideas staff may have. There are things that are being looked at in the assembly, and frankly, on both sides of the aisle, which is refreshing and a change from past things. Things were typically, the super majority looked at things in a different way. Now they're finally seeing, hey, this is a bit of a problem, and our residents are concerned about it. So I'm thankful to see those changes, and hopefully, they're meaningful, and hopefully, they get through a committee. But we'll just, we'll leave that for a future discussion.
So the point being too, the adoption of an ordinance is not going to stop this one from opening up at the current location.
Hundred percent.
It's just simply the timing won't preclude them opening. So what we could, you know, the idea would be that the proliferation would be addressed. But the reality is, I mean unfortunate as it may be, that may be our reality. We have to understand. And I think that's what we're hoping, that we get some litigation that, I mean, some success at litigation and things, or legislation that would allow us to do things. But right now, it appears that we're destined for that reality, for the, for the short term anyway. I mean, you know, and again, I wish I could go in. I wish I could go, somebody, you know, I can't take a sign off a property.
No.
If it's within their private property, I can't even have our people go off and take it. So that's, we are very limited in what we can or can't do. And you said it earlier in the meeting, we have to respect property rights, even where we may not want to.
Hundred percent.
We have to be protective of that.
Will you also include, I discussed an idea with you, will you and Todd kind of work around that and add that to your list of stuff next month for us to discuss?
Be happy to talk about that as, as an issue, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to council member meeting attendance reports. First off, mosquito and vector control.
Thank you. So we met last week, June 20th, and the board of trustees received one presentation on the district's vector borne disease responses. And then part of the consent calendar, we just approved some standard items in addition to approving a reclassification of the accounting specialists, one and two, and a fleet coordinator. And the reason why they do this is because it's going to open up the potential to be able to broaden the sample size, because that's my science brain, the pool of candidates that can apply for this. And then if you remember, we've been discussing a lot about, do we buy a new building? Do we remodel? And so we finally decided to direct staff to regard, regarding the facility improvement project. And so we made a motion to have staff issue an RFP for architectural services to remain on site and put it to bed, to rest, any of the potential looking for another building, and especially if the SIT project goes forward and is successful, the little 400 square foot area, sorry, quarter mile. It's a quarter mile Mission Viejo, 400 homes. And if the data from that proves successful, then it's going to be expanded to a countywide event, but it'll cost millions of dollars, so, which will require some sort of other funding source. So there was a group of us that felt that also trying to go out and, you know, buy a building for 50, 60 million dollars probably isn't a good idea, and we should just work with what we have. So that passed of the 34 votes, 32 yes, 2 no. So that was nice. So no more talk about finding a new building. We're just going to stay and live within our means. We're creating two new ad hoc committees, of which I will be a part of, to be working on a new five-year strategic plan, and then also a legislative ad hoc to be able to, as I mentioned before, trying to reach out to some of our congressional members, perhaps getting some funding that way, because this is a public health issue. And then for some departmental updates, human cases. To date, the district has received 15 travel-related dinghy cases. And again, they're increasing and getting bad, especially, like I said, if you're traveling to some of these areas outside of the United States. There's one flea borne typhus case. We anticipate that 2024 will have an increase in travel-related case investigations for dinghy, and Florida's got it really bad right now. So if you're going to Florida even, please take caution. And then mosquito counts have been lower, and this was last week, when it was still cold in the mornings. But they've been lower than the five-year averages due to that continued cool weather in June. But now that we're having these high temperature, we anticipate that the mosquito counts and activity will increase. And we are seeing early indicators of West Nile virus activity with positive mosquitoes in all the counties around us. So it's only a matter of time before it comes here. And again, any of our residents that feel like they want to have their property inspected, please reach out to me. I can make that happen. And our inspectors are really, really good, and they'll find areas that you wouldn't even think. So that's it. I can answer any questions if you have them.
I just want to thank you because you've actually been a tremendous resource for our residents.
Oh, you are.
Past and, and obviously, present and hopefully in the future. So thank you very much, and your science background is instrumental. So sanitation district.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I attended the OC sanitation board meeting last month. The board elected chairperson and vice chairperson of the Orange County Sanitation District Board of Directors. One nomination was received for the office of the chairperson, and Ryan Gallagher was anointed the, the position.
Anointed.
I know most of you probably know Ryan. So I think you'll make a great board chairman. Also, there was one single nomination for vice chair, and that's John Dimitru will be vice chair for the, for the board of directors. So anticipate a lot going on there. I also attended the administrative committee meeting this past month. Most of the meeting was focused on the two-year budget, because tomorrow night is the final board of directors meeting to approve the two-year budget. So we'll do the 24, 25, 25, 26. They too have some very sharp, wonderful, smart people putting their budgets together, just like we do. And I'll tell you, it's, it's amazing to see it all come together. And the cool part was, all of us had, all the board of directors had input into the, not only the strategic plan, but also the budget itself. So pleased with what's going to happen tomorrow night. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do not have any reports from the county fire authority. They have met, but due to work and health challenges, mostly health challenges, I wasn't able to get to committee meetings and/or the board of directors meetings. But as I understand it, the agendas were very light, and I will report on them next month. And most of the meeting was, I should say, concerned with performance reviews involving executive staff. So we'll leave it at that, since it's a closed session. Next up, we have Orange County Library Advisory Board.
No meeting.
Thank you. Orange Unified School District Schools, City Schools.
Yes, there was no meeting. However, I do have a couple of updates. Construction is continuing all summer long at Villa Park High School. They are relocating the stairways for the 100, 200 building and installing a new passenger elevator. They're modernizing the 100, 200 restrooms and working on completing the new phase-two classroom building for a fall grand opening. And also, you've heard me talk, the committee has spoken several times about crossing guards. However, as part of its cost-cutting measures, the city of Orange has decided to eliminate all of its crossing guard positions. The city of Villa Park does pay for one crossing guard, the one in front of Villa Park High School, but the position over by Serrano Elementary is provided by the city of Orange, so will therefore be eliminated as part of their budget cuts. If you have a son or daughter or grandson or granddaughter who is interested in attending one of our United States service academies, our Congresswoman Young Kim is hosting a service academy information session this Saturday, June 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. It will be held at the community center at the Marketplace, 2961 El Camino Real in Tustin. And you can register at the Congresswoman's website at youngkim.house.gov. And these sessions are a great introduction to the service academies and all that goes into the application process. And that's my report.
Thank you. Leac, no meeting. Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
There was no meeting. Our next meeting is tomorrow evening. However, I would like to give a couple reminders for upcoming events. The foundation will be hosting the annual Fourth of July parade titled Stars on Parade at 8:30 a.m. on July 4th. You can find the route in the feeder. And a really important note is that the parade will be meeting at Saravilla Middle School this year, not the high school, due to the construction. They will also be hosting two concerts in the park this summer. Radio Royalty will be playing on Saturday, June 6th at 6:00 p.m., and there will be a food truck. And Paperback Writer, a Beatles cover band, will be playing on Saturday, August 31st at 6:00 p.m. And both shows will be held in the Saravilla Middle School Amphitheater. And finally, please mark your calendars for August 16th, which the foundation will be collaborating with the Villa Park Women's League for another symphony on the go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the following order, Housing Legislative Committee, Bridges at Kramer Place, and Orange County Older Adults Advisory Commission.
Okay, no meeting for the housing authority or housing, Bridges at Kramer Place. We have one of our third, I think, bylaw meetings. As you remember, we're trying to fix the bylaws, because since the inception of Bridges at Kramer Place Advisory Commission, six years ago, there was no stipulation that the chair would ever step down and that the vice chair would ever become the chair. And so, and we didn't have any accommodations for alternates. So that is all being fixed, and also kind of getting in line with all BCCs, boards, commissions, and committees throughout the county. So we're making some of the other changes. So it was supposed to be done last time, but because county council is trying to make all the BCCs in alignment, we had to make some minor tweaks. But this will hopefully, we'll do our little committee this week, and then the full board meets next month, and we'll be able to vote on that. And hopefully that, then it goes to council and supervisors, and then once they vote on it and approve it, and then it would go into effect January of 2025. And then that way, so for instance, I've been vice chair for six years, so it's a succession, then vice chair becomes chair, and then the chair sits, just becomes a member. So working on that, so that when my, it's kind of a succession plan for me too, because once I'm off council, there would be no one to take it. So that way, it'll set up for the future councils to be able to name alternates as well, because if I can't make it, even if you showed up, you can't vote. So we're trying to change all that. And then with the senior citizens advisory, well, I can't say anymore, the Orange County Older Adults Commission, because we're not SCAC anymore. We had a great presentation, June 14th, last week, and there's a flyer, and it looks like this, I don't know if everyone can see. And it's in the theater, and we were able to hear from the elder abuse and disability rights lawyers who does, it's kind of a pro bono, but it's also on a pay scale. So if you can't afford, they do a sliding scale. But this is really important, because there's a lot of our older adults that don't realize that just having a will does not solve all your problems, and that you also have to have an advanced healthcare directive. You also have to have a power of attorney or whatnot. And a lot of people don't know where to go for these questions, or they need it right away. So the presentation by the founder of the elder abuse and disability rights commission is a link on this, and it's in the feeder as well, and it's on my social media. And so I would recommend everybody go listen to that, or, you know, give them a call. It's, again, like I said, a sliding scale, and they'll help you, you know, get your affairs in order, because a lot of times, it's that crisis mode, and then there's things that hold up everything, and you don't want to end up in probate. So a lot of great information for that. So that's it.
Great advice. Thank you. Next up, we will hear individual council member information items. Let's start with Councilman Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, I'm fighting a little bit of a cold myself. But I would like to take a moment to wish a staple in our community a speedy recovery. Last week, I think we all know that the gentleman was in his motorized scooter and got hit by an automobile as he was riding through town. He sustained significant injuries, was hospitalized. Elizabeth and I want to wish he and his family a speedy recovery. If there's anything we can do to help, please reach out. I know we all see him all the time, riding up, down the streets. We see him here.
Everybody.
In the shopping center. So he is a staple in the community. So please keep him in your prayers as, as we go through this week. On June 11th, I'm sad to say, Elizabeth and I attended a life celebration for Blaine John Moller, son of Marshall Moller, and uncle to Brendan Moller, who we all know very well. So if you, if you have an opportunity to reach out to Brendan and wish him well and thank, and thank him. Blaine was a retired Santa Ana police officer and a training officer for the California Highway Patrol. He was laid to rest with honors. Our prayers and thoughts go out to the Moller family and wish him well. I also attended, on June 8th, the 70th anniversary open house for Orange County Sanitation District. We had probably 1,300 people there total. 700 people actually went through the Plant One tour. So they had a lot of games, and there were community leaders. There was a whole, I mean, most of the cities had all their representation there. So it was a, it was a really good, well-attended event. I also attended the Serrano Water District Town Hall last night. We were given a presentation of their go-forward strategy with Irvine Water District, and we will see what their plans to do long-term with their assets as they're transferred. I know the community's looking forward to the Fourth of July parade. Unfortunately, Elizabeth and I won't be here this year. We're going to see our great grandchildren and our grandchildren. So wish everybody well and happy, fun time, because we, I've always enjoyed that, even riding my little tractor around the town, so, addressing that up, so. And then don't forget to come by the Rotary Safe and Same Fireworks booth to help celebrate the Fourth of July. Money's going to the great causes. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Council Mayor, excuse me, Jones, excuse me.
Thank you. I was also pleased to attend the Serrano Water District Town Hall last evening. And if you missed it, I would strongly suggest that you watch the recording. There are some big changes coming in the future, and our residents had some great questions that were answered last night. Last week, I attended Congresswoman Young Kim, Kim's mayor's breakfast in Mayor Rossini's place. It was interesting to discuss the challenges that our local cities are facing and how the federal government can help us. I also attended the Boys and Girls Club Leadership Breakfast last week, and it was just so inspiring to see our community leaders step up to support these great programs, such as the Angels and U.S. Bank. However, it was even more inspiring to talk to some of the young men and women who have gone through the program and who are now returning as mentors for the younger children. These younger, young people were just so impressive, and to see where they are headed from such humble beginnings was just so moving. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Wu, sir?
Thank you for the time.
Thank you for the time. First of all, we'd like to everyone to celebrate Fourth of July safely and happily. And I would also encourage residents and neighboring residents to stop by Villa Park High School to purchase these fireworks from the PFSO booth that will benefit all four schools in our city.
Oh, competition, huh? Huh? Come on, let's go. You want a rebuttal or not? Is she allowed to do that?
Well, if you didn't mention it, I wouldn't mention it myself, but since you mentioned it, I have to. So, but let me mention it again, stop by the high school to buy your fireworks starting this Sunday all the way to the Fourth. And also thanks to all the residents attended the city council meeting tonight to share with your thoughts on this important topic for our city. So we was certainly looking to what we can, you know, come up with as a city altogether. Outside of that, thank you so much for your time.
Councilman Miles.
Thank you. So I was asked to attend, Supervisor Foley had a women's roundtable last week, and it was, it was an excellent roundtable. It was participated by several school board members throughout the county, several, all women, by the way, several city elected officials. And although she is not our district supervisor, she wanted perspectives from, honestly, quite frankly, other sides of the aisle, and there were several of us that were there. It was great to get some dialogue and have some candid conversations about young women and women in Orange County and all the hot topics that go along with that, especially the increase in eating disorders for young women and, you know, some of the anxiety and other mental health issues that seem to be plaguing a lot of our young women in Orange County. So looking forward to the next one. And like I said, there was some very good conversations, and it was on a very neutral ground, and like I said, really looking forward to the next one. And then June 21st, I attended Flag Day at the Anaheim Weston, and there was almost 1,000 people there. A lot of our congressional and state electeds, and we got to hear Governor Glenn Youngkin from Virginia speak, and he's really tall, he's like 6'5". I did not realize how tall he was. So that was pretty exciting. Want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July, and again, be safe, and please remember our furry pets, and, you know, they take it really hard, and please make sure you keep them indoors. We get a lot of lost pets because they get scared and they find ways out of their yards, so I think it's really important to remember, you know, just try and be cognizant, it hurts their ears and scares them. And then about two hours before our meeting, I got a call from, and I want to remind our residents about scams. And so I got a call from someone who said they were going to be in Villa Park next week and that they had driven by my home and that noticed that my home might have needed some new windows or something, and that they were going to be by and they wanted to stop and discuss with me. And so I played along, but what I need residents to realize is that solicitation is not allowed in Villa Park without a permit. So once I let him do his spiel, I asked him if he had come by the city to apply for a permit, and he hung up on me. So I want to make sure that people understand that if someone comes and knocks on your door, first off, if you want the, and one of the reasons why they have to come to the city is because if you don't want to have a solicitor, you sign up for the do not solicit list, and then when someone comes to apply for that permit, they will get the list of the residents that you're not allowed to go to, and most of the time, they don't do that. So whenever someone comes to your door to do solar, to do new windows, to do a new roof, to do whatever, ask them for their permit, and they should have a badge, and they should have a permit number from the city. And if they don't, then they are here illegally and you need to call the sheriff. So I thought it was very fortuitous that it happened about two hours before the meeting, and want to remind our residents, please, please, please be careful, they're getting more brazen, and they're especially preying on our older adults. So that's it, happy Fourth, and oh, and a happy retirement to Bill Tarrant.
I would like to echo your sentiments with respect to the scammers out there. I was speaking with a colleague who lives in a nearby city of Yorba Linda, and I've spoken to our city attorney about this. They too have a do not solicit list, do not knock on my door, do not be a pain in the neck, so to speak. An individual who purported to represent a company called Sun Run came to his door, was actually audio recording the conversation, which in and of itself is inappropriate and potentially illegal, and could not produce a permit when challenged. So under those circumstances, I would strongly encourage, as my colleague did, notify the sheriff's department immediately of said activity, because they might be casing your house for burglary, they might be just trying to scam somebody who is intellectually not quite there. You just, you need, if you see something, you need to say something. On that same note, I want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. I encourage residents, if you are interested in fireworks, obviously, to purchase the safe and sane ones and utilize them appropriately, and utilize them within the days that are governed within our codes. Please do not use illegal fireworks. Please report people in Orange that are doing that, that make Villa Park residents look like they're doing it. And sadly, if folks in Villa Park are doing it, you need to let us know, because it's inappropriate and it's dangerous, and we do not need any more house fires or kids losing their hands or their eyesight or what have you. Please be responsible, please be safe, don't drink and drive, have a happy and safe Fourth of July. And please, kids out there, parents, I saw three kids under the age of 16 riding e-bikes on Valley Drive on the way down here, not a single one was wearing a helmet. You need to wear a helmet, and it needs to be securely attached. We do not need a tragedy like that happening, please. God bless you all. We are adjourned, next meeting is July 23rd, 2024 at 6:30 p.m. Take care.